This is a meeting of January 17th. We'll note that Commissioners Jackson and Frenzel are absent. All others are present. And the first item of business for your consideration is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Now, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. The motion carries. Brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Now, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to Tab 4, which is a non timetable agenda. And the first item there is a consideration to approve a purchase agreement. And Mr. Kessel, would you introduce that item?
Thank you, President Johnson, Commission. This item is related to a land deal. The city currently owns approximately 44 acres on the southeast side of town. There is a map within your documents to show the location of that land in particular. It is directly west of Energy Drive and north of Vallard, where those two roads intersect. Of that 45 acres, we are interested in swapping acre for acre, 25 of that with Dickinson Energy Park. The 25 acres that we would be swapping for is immediately east of the Baylor Building site and would require, or would allow us to create a campus of structures. The intent is to build the Public Works Building on that site and the ensuing campus would be laid out to take advantage of the topography and hide some of our land hills and cement recycle sites and things like that. The other part of this arrangement is the acquisition of another nine acres, approximately nine acres, north of 21st Street. There is a secondary map that includes this site and immediately east of State Avenue. This nine acre site would be a potential location for a public safety center. There is some waterways that do cross that site, so there's not necessarily nine buildable acres there. But we do feel through soil remediation that we can acquire enough acreage to put a public safety center on that site. Chief Seavock will be speaking later in this evening's meeting about a public safety center. So of the remaining land, then, of the 44, approximately 44 acres that the city owns, we'd be swapping land for that 25 and for this nine. And then the remainder would be, we'd receive a check from Dickinson Energy Park for the tune of a dollar twenty-five a square foot. So the city would be getting over $800,000 in cash for this property. The purchase agreement itself is not a traditional purchase agreement or one that the city uses. It's similar, but there have been some changes just because of the nature of the deal. And I'll allow Attorney Coling to go over those changes with you.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. There have been a couple of changes to the agreement, changes to the version that was included within your packets. The two changes involve the inclusion of a liquidated damages provision in the event of a breach or default by one party. There is liquidated damages provision in the amount of $5,000 in the event that either party backs out of the agreement or is unable to close. And the other inclusion in this agreement that is not represented in the version that was in your packets is we included a provision that allows for title insurance to be provided in lieu of an abstract for the properties. These properties are being split from larger parcels, so abstracts are not readily available for them. And it would take some time to create an abstract and some cost to do that. And we can accomplish substantially the same thing through a title insurance policy. And that is the reason why we included that provision in this agreement as well. Be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Coling and Mr. Kessel. Are there any questions?
Mr. President, I think it's a fair price. I think in the long-term planning of the city, I think this is the way that we've looked for this here to go for a couple of years now. I think it benefits the city if we can make that our main campus out there with the Public Works Building and so on. I like the exchange of the nine acres north of town for future development for us. I think it's a good deal for both parties.
And the proceeds would go into the Future Fund, correct? Or?
That's correct.
That is correct. Okay.
So you're asking us to approve this purchase and sale agreement this evening?
That would be correct.
Okay. Are you ready to move a motion on this item?
Sure.
Mr. President, I'd move we proceed with the property purchase and sale agreement as stated.
I would second that.
Okay, we have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Go to Item B, and this is a joint powers agreement. And Mr. Kessel, you can introduce that also.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commission. The next item is a joint powers agreement that would be between the city and the Stark County. This would be for the engagement of planning services. The term of the agreement would be annual, year to year, and it would be ongoing. The fee for service is an hourly rate that would be charged. We expect that there'll be no more than about 100 hours used per month. And the employee would be that of the city's. We would contract via this agreement to the county for those planner services. There's a 5% annual rate increase that would occur annually as long as this joint powers agreement is still in effect. We provide the equipment, the office space, and other accoutrements as required. The county is taking a vote on this very agreement at their meeting tomorrow. We have not, in the communications we've had, it appears that they will approve this agreement as per your packet, so I don't expect any changes. We would then use the remaining time in the city of Dickinson to work on issues within our community. We obviously are a fast-growing community, and Mr. Carton will assign those duties as required. So if there's any questions, I'll certainly try to answer those, but essentially it's a joint powers agreement for planning services, a planner we will provide to the county. Oh, I should say, there are two items that are specifically excluded from this contract, those two items being code enforcement and prosecution of zoning violations. Those are things that the county will have to provide those services on their own.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any comments or questions by Commissioners? This is something that's been discussed numerous times before, so, okay. Are you ready for a motion, then?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Move to approve the joint powers agreement on Stark County?
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries, takes us to reports. And I think those are yours also, Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commission. The first item is a Southwest Water Memo. We've talked about this memo in the past. I don't believe we've actually included it as an item for your review. This is the memo we discussed earlier that raises the rate that the city pays for treated water. We then turn, distribute that water to our customers and charge a rate as well. We anticipated a increase, but that increase has exceeded what we budgeted for, so there's a difference of about a nickel. We don't have a recommendation this evening. We just wanted you to see the document that was provided to us. And the second paragraph in that memo is the most important, or the one that pertains to the city itself. We will be asking for a recommendation from this body at an ensuing meeting, but since there's only three of you tonight, we thought this would be best held as a report again.
Mr. Kessel, if the city were to recoup or pass on that unanticipated nickel, what on average, or what does that mean to the average user on an additional cost?
To the city, it would mean about $40,000. So you break that up into each customer, and the number is obviously much smaller. I can't tell you exactly per customer, but that's an easy number we can figure out.
I'm trying to remember. Somehow I'm thinking we have roughly 10,000 meters?
I think the average, Mr. President, is around 10,000 per family.
So about, if you just did it on a meter basis, it's about $4 per meter per year?
Per year. If there's no other questions, I'll move on to Item 2, which is another city land sale proposal. The city owns about 160 acres of land on the southwest side of town. Currently, there's, we use that for three different purposes, or some of that land for three different purposes. The first purpose is for a fire training site. We use approximately seven acres today. We have a designation, a reservation of additional land for the expansion of a cemetery. And we use the third portion for our inert, our emergency inert landfill. We do take inert materials at our current MSW site, but we use this in emergency situations such as the tornado. We did open that up, use that facility. It's now been covered and closed. We are permitted to continue to use that emergency site if needed for several more years. But there's been a lot of interest in that acreage from developers. And we have discussed the idea amongst city staff about what would be reserved, needed to be reserved for the future of those three endeavors in that area. We think that 20 acres for the fire training site would be adequate. We believe that the acreage that is now being reserved for the cemetery is likely to be adequate. And then the inert landfill is much more difficult to ascertain. As you remember, Wink told us that we only have about five years of use of our current landfill site. So that is something that concerns me, that we should retain that long-term, or at least for the next few years, until we can make sure that we do have something acquired long-term. But with the remaining site, then, that means that there would be well over 100 acres that could be, we could divest ourselves of and allow someone from the development area to create something of quality in that area. We have been talking, or I have been talking with about three different development companies. And what we're interested in is affordable housing. That's certainly a goal that we have as a city to provide. And another goal is staff housing. We currently have two homes that we have been using. They've been utilized almost every day since we've acquired them from staff that we have hired and allowed to transitionally house themselves until they can find permanent housing in the community. Two homes is, we believe, going to be inadequate, and we'd like to see additional staff housing. We've also talked with the school district in town and a few other public institutions. They are in a similar situation as the city. So they'd like to see, they are also considering staff housing. So if we were allowed to RFP or produce an RFP for that land, what we'd like to see is a master plan that would accommodate affordable housing in some way. We'd like to see the developers define what they think is affordable and/or we can define that in the RFP itself. We'd also like to see that they reserve space so that the city could build about an eight plex, maybe even a 12 plex, depending on the needs of other public entities. That is a land that we could make available to them to build on as well. At one point in time, we were hoping that we could swap the land for the building. But I believe through Attorney Coling's research, we may be able to achieve that goal, but it's very difficult to do so. So if we were allowed to create an RFP to sell that land, what we could do is use the proceeds from that land, rather than going into the Future Fund, we could use the proceeds to construct a staff of housing as we see fit. But that would be a departure from norm. Normally, all of the revenue goes into the Future Fund directly. So it's something I wanted to bring to the Commission to see what your thoughts were in the terms of a report. If you are open to the idea of an RFP, that we could then sift through all of our responses, find out which one we think is the best, we could then award based on our parameters. Or we could just, of course, hold on to that land as well. But we do believe at this point, there's in excess of what we may need for our purposes down there. So I'd like to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any questions or reaction to?
Mr. Coling, right out of the bat here, what would be one of the obstacles in doing what we want to do here?
Commissioner Steiner, one of the obstacles, probably the primary obstacle, is the restriction in state law requiring cities, if they're going to dispose of property above a certain value, that it has to be publicly bid and competitively bid. And it allows for services to be included in that bid if they're incidental to the sale of the land itself. But here, where your, the concept is of exchanging land for a building, it's the building and the structure that is really the essence of the transaction. So my concern is that in exchanging land for a government building or a city staff housing building, that it may run afoul of the state limitations to competitively bid structures and competitively bid the disposition of public property.
So how do you sell and preclude that money from going to the Future Fund? What are the steps that we take there to accomplish the same end goal? I would have to make sure that it's not in our ordinance. I don't believe it is. I think it's simply a policy at this point that anything beyond $50,000 goes into the Future Fund.
I don't believe it's in ordinance.
Is it in ordinance? Then it would require an ordinance change or an exception. Since you can't grant an exception, you'd have to change the ordinance to allow for this transaction to be conducted differently than we have in the past. And the intent, I'm not sure if I mentioned, is initially, we would allow 20 acres to be purchased and developed, but it doesn't mean that we'd sell the whole acreage at one time. We would have it master planned, the whole acreage, but it doesn't mean we have to sell it all at one time. We can sell it in 20 or 40 acre increments as we see fit.
Is your main motivation here to get some staff housing? I mean, is that really why you would go through all this?
Well, I think there's, yeah, that's certainly one of them. We certainly need staff housing. But certainly, the other component is trying to erect affordable housing. We hear that frequently, that that is a need in the community. There's a lot of market rate housing going up. We have sponsored three different projects. We hope that one of them will get built here in Dickinson, based on the state's process. But there's no guarantees that that will happen. So we're hoping that some kind of affordable housing could be created as well. And then there is, we own this land, so we are incurring some costs of maintenance of that land as well. We do, at this point, allow someone to hay that, so we are getting some small income, I guess, off of it, but...
Well, I'd be reluctant to support amending the Future Fund ordinance to do this. I think the land sale should go into the Future Fund. If the city owns property, I think that can, like an eight plex or a six plex, I think that can be set up as an enterprise fund because it would collect rent and have expenditures. And so I think, you know, you'd want it to stand on its own. And I think the Future Fund could loan money to an enterprise fund at a specified interest rate, just as if the Future Fund has loaned to other funds before. I'd much rather go that way if we're going that direction. But I also have something else, I mean, I'd want to throw out, you know, talking with the KLJ people about the comprehensive community plan, you know, one of the preliminary conclusions they're coming to in the area of affordable housing is that we really should have a nice development for manufactured homes or mobile homes. And one that might be planned, one that would have restrictions on the amount of density. You know, for example, you might say, we're going to do five homes per acre type thing. And so I'm wondering if, you know, if you're going to ask for proposals, if we couldn't have a broad range of proposals come in, rather than the city say, in a sense, here's the parameters we want the proposals to be within and have those as fairly narrow parameters because this site might make a pretty good site for developing a nice planned development for manufactured or mobile homes. Talking with the KLJ folks and also with Stark County Development, there was some thought that we probably could get these units in at $150,000 or less. And that's considerably under what the average selling price is right now in Dickinson for homes. So I would hope you would consider that option also.
Well, certainly, and I think Galen Baker's in the audience today, that he's been asking me about that very same idea of a mobile home park in that area. I did also talk with the park, members of the park board today, and a good use for that inert landfill would be a park of some kind because it would be difficult to construct on top of it. So they're excited about that being used as a park. They don't have a lot of parks in the southwest side of town, other than grass, and that's a softball park. I'm certainly not opposed to doing, as President Johnson has outlined, creating an RFP that still would reserve some land for a city structure of some kind, but still accomplishes the goal of affordable housing and then setting up an enterprise fund.
Well, I think, you know, if you're really going to own property whose intended long-term purpose is housing and you're going to rent it to employees, I mean, I think you have to run it through an enterprise fund. Maybe you don't have to, but I think it would be good accounting to do it that way.
I like the area. It opens up growth for a whole new part of the community that we haven't seen any growth in, and that would be the south and west of the city limits. So I like the idea.
Can we break right here? We have a 4:55 timetable. Leon Malberg would like to present to the Commission on the issue, Measure 2. So at this time, we'd welcome Mr. Malberg.
My name is Leon Malberg. I live at 941 13th Street West in Dickinson, North Dakota. I'd like to thank the Commission for putting me on the agenda fairly early. I have three other city commissions to attend yet this evening. In the way of information, I am not one that carried this petition. You will not find my signature on any of the petitions. However, I feel it is an issue that needs to be debated. I'm not here to promote Measure Number 2, but hope to promote the debate and civil discord. Why do I use the word "civil discord"? Last week, in a 124-hour period, the people that feel that Measure Number 2 is terrible referred to the petition people as backward-thinking, dumb, wrong-headed, dangerous, reckless, draconian, idiotic, extremist, choked-off, and enemies of local government. That, to me, doesn't seem to be civil discord. It really flies in the face of the people that signed the petition. And that's 30,000 people in North Dakota. Now, I know there are probably some kooks in North Dakota, but I don't think there's 30,000 of them. So I think a little respect is due, and I guess I'm just trying to promote that. I have found up to 80% of the people that I have talked to about the measure have not read the measure. They are referring to what they have heard from other people and repeating it. The opposition has also said that this would lock things in the Constitution of the state of North Dakota, not any more than what our present system has locked into the Constitution. On top of that, a supermajority of the legislature can put this on the ballot in 20 minutes. They also tell me they have 200,000 supporters at the Chamber, State Chamber of Commerce, and I'm saying if that's the case, they should be able to do a petition drive with 30,000 signatures in five days. So in my research, I find, looking at the petition and the sponsors, one of the sponsors is a retired 24-year county commissioner in Ward County. Another of the sponsor is a current county commissioner in Ward County. So I'm saying, I just don't find those to be idiotic or the other adjectives were used. Now, what we have done, or what the group has done, is prepare a book about the position of Measure Number 2. It really is quite simple. It's about 104 pages. The foreword is by Congressman Ron Paul of Texas. The first chapter is by Brent Marlock, the chief executive officer of the North Dakota Policy Council. The second chapter is by Charlene Nelson, a homeowner, homeschooler in Castleton, North Dakota. And the last paragraph, our last chapter, is by Bob Hale, a practicing attorney and large property owner in Minot. One of the things I like about it is that if you don't have any time at all, there's an index in the back so that you can look up particular topics and get the information within the book. If you have a little more time than that, I would suggest you read Chapter 1 first, and then maybe 3, and then 2. I think they are well-written, informative, and certainly answer a lot of questions because there are a lot of things being stated across the state that are certainly not true. What I'd like to do is just hand these out. That's my only purpose this evening. I hope that you have time to look at it. Am I demanding you read it? No. I'm just wanting to get these out. We have decided to try and put these in the hands of every elected official in southwest North Dakota. So that's why we're going full strength, and I'd be at three other city commission meetings yet tonight. So, thank you, I'll deliver.
Did you hit one the other night? Yes?
I did.
Would you do, do you have?
With that, I would like to thank you for your...
With that, I would like to thank you for your time, and unless there are some questions, I will be proceeding down the road. Thank you. It's 5 o'clock. We also have a 5 o'clock timetable. This is a public hearing. And regarding the street vacation, and Mr. Cortan, would you make the introduction, please?
Mr. President, commissioners, this street vacation is a tract of land located within the city's frontage road between Energy Drive and 28th Avenue East. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. Attached in your summary memo, there is a recommended condition that the property owners, that the property owners provide a vacation easement, or utility easement, prior to finalizing the street vacation. With that, I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. At this time, we declare the public hearing open. Anyone who wishes to comment on this item may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Not, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'd invite any comments or questions by city commissioners. Mr. Coling, is there a resolution number for this one?
There is, Mr. President. This would be Resolution 03-2012.
03, okay. Would there be a motion regarding Resolution 03-212? And Mr. Coling has provided language for a motion in the city commissioners' memo there under timetable agenda. So if you were in favor of this motion, I think we would recommend that you use the language in the memo.
Okay. I'll move to approve Resolution 03-2012, providing for vacation of the frontage road between Energy Drive and 28th Avenue East, contingent upon the grant by the landowner of a utility easement acceptable to the city engineer and city attorney.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have the motion, the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We'll go back to reports, and we were discussing that city land on the southwest. Was there more that any of our commissioners wanted to say in terms of feedback here? Mr. Kessel, any other comments?
Just in the brief conversation that Attorney Coling and I had, the RFP process seems to be the hang-up, and we might have to just go to a straight bid for the land. We may be able to accomplish exactly what was spoken to today. Simply bid the land, require a master plan, be completed for the full acreage. Proceeds would go to the enterprise fund and then loaned, or excuse me, to a future fund and then loaned to an enterprise fund, which would then build city staff. And then, just the requirement for affordable housing could be a density requirement, because this land would have to be rezoned and annexed into the city as well. And so certainly, the rezoning effort could help us with the density issues, and therefore the affordability on the project. So maybe at the next commission meeting, we can come back with something more formal, presented to you.
You know, I think that's fine. I also think the commission needs to think about owning apartment buildings. And I understand your motivation for wanting to do so, but, you know, when we own an apartment building, we're in the apartment business then. One, you're competing with the private sector. Two, you own that whether we're in a booming economy or a bust economy. And, you know, we saw what happened to apartment buildings during the bust, too. So, you know, you're taking some risk here with this.
Mr. Kessel, have you looked into, or is there any way that we can partner with one of the entities that have been presenting to the commission for affordable housing, or with any of the local entities that manage and promote affordable housing? Is there yet another way that we could approach this?
Yeah, actually, it's a good question, Commissioner. I did speak with a local builder, and they are willing to build a fourplex or even an eightplex. Our costs would be higher than I originally anticipated. I'm not sure that they'd be a lot less if we were the general contractor, so to speak, or the general, if we built our own building. We also did look at having another entity in town manage apartments. We looked at the school district, possibly the county, the city, maybe even Southwest Water, all building together a structure, a twenty-fourplex potentially, and having that be managed by another entity in the community. So there has been a lot of different options bantered about. The problem you have with a public entity, or excuse me, a private entity owning the building is you then pay their rates, which tend to be excessive and are, even at the wages we've increased over the last year and a half, it still makes it difficult to pay the rates that they want and to make sure that they're available whenever we need them. When you enter into a building contract with that many public entities involved, everybody has a different exit strategy. You have to condo the building out. There's just other challenges, not necessarily insurmountable, but it certainly does have other challenges. So we have looked at several different options on how to get at the issue of staff for city housing. I think we've settled on it's best for us to build, but that's only if the commission allows that.
Other comments or questions?
I would think that we're going to have more public discussion on this in the future.
Yeah.
I would think so. You want to do one more before we go to the timetable?
Sure. There's been a joint city commission planning and zoning meeting scheduled for February 22nd at 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. This meeting is intended to bring both entities together to talk about the land use map, the urban services area, and other things that K L J has been working on in terms of our comp plan. Mr. Cortan, do you have any additional comments tonight?
Mr. President, commissioners, just to add to that, we would like to also talk about the development strategies that were proposed at the last Planning Advisory Committee meeting. We want to make sure that you, as commissioners, are on board with the progress that we have been working with K L J on. We're about, you know, 40%, 45% through the project. These are significant issues, and we just want to make sure that you concur with that for us to move forward with it. So, you know, it was proposed by K L J. I concurred with the idea that I think that we need to have this meeting. We just want to make sure that we're looking at it in the right light, because if there's a change, this would be the time to do it before we spent a lot of additional time and money going off in interaction.
So, February 22nd, 3:00 to 5:00, rather than this February 14th date, then?
Correct. It's an updated date and time, yeah. February 22nd, 3:00 to 5:00, here at City Hall.
You will send us an agenda via email?
Yes. You'll get the agenda, and you'll also get the strategies that have been, the draft strategies put together by K L J. Would you like me to continue, or do you want to go to the 5:10?
No, it's time to go to the 5:10. So we have a 5:10 timetable agenda item, asked here a report from the Dickinson Municipal Airport, and we'll welcome Matt Remsey.
Mayor, commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to speak here tonight. The purpose of me coming in tonight is just to give you guys kind of a state of the airport, and you guys know what we're doing out there, and if you guys have any questions, allow me to answer those. Excuse me. The first thing I'd like to talk about is air service, and we'll start with commercial air service. Essential air service. Our bid is coming up this year in August. We normally have it about midsummer. So I am anticipating it in August, and we are, again, going to anticipate that Great Lakes is going to bid the service. However, our numbers, as you can see from the ridership, are up 83% over 2010. We did approximately 18,950, and we do have the potential to possibly see another bidder come in. If we do, there will be no doubt that the airport authority will be out there talking with people, seeing what their reactions are, and coming back in, coming back to make a decision so everybody in the community is on a united front as we go to the DOT to say, "We'd like Great Lakes," or "We would like this carrier." So, but also with the essential air service program, I did read this morning that the House and Senate have come to an agreement on the essential air service, and they're going to fund it at $193 million for the five-year period that the FAA reauthorization bill has been put into effect. The bill has not been voted on yet, but they are in conference, and that's what their agreement on essential air service has come to. It's a little bit lower than what the DOT office would have liked. They would have liked to see $200 million over the five years, but they feel that the $193 million will be all right, especially with some of the changes that they made to the essential air service program. So that was good news to hear, because we are an essential air service airport, and that's very important to us. As you can see, the next item is ridership. Like I said, we were up 83% for 2011 over 2010, with approximately 18,950 passengers in plane. I just got the numbers for January this morning. We were up 78% for January as well. There were two big things that happened in 2011 that really spiked up our numbers into the 80% increase. The first one was, early in 2011, we worked with the airline to, essentially, get ourselves away from Williston and Sidney. So we no longer shared round trip. We have our own round trips now. And for the first six months of the year, we had just three round trips. And then in July, we added a fourth round trip, and that's where we've seen our numbers, again, increased drastically. And the four round trips have been doing very well for us. They not only provide additional seats for the customers, but also redundancy. If for some reason a flight is canceled due to weather or mechanical issues, there's still another flight that we can try to get them back. Unfortunately, with, one drawback to that is, our flights are extremely full. They have approximately 24 seats on the aircraft, and majority of those times, they are full. So we are still continuing to work with the airline. We would like to try to get a fifth flight in here. However, with Great Lakes, they only have six Embraer aircraft in between Dickinson and Williston. Those aircraft are pretty much used up. So we're continuing to work with them to increase air service and assure that the demands of the customers are being met. With General Aviation, they're doing exceptionally well. We're seeing double-digit increases in their fuel sales. We're also seeing double-digit increases in the hangar revenue that the airport is receiving. So we know that General Aviation is being used. I'm happy to report that in 2011, the FBO added a new position of Director of Flight Operations, and they really moved forward with charter service. We now have two certified charter pilots in Dickinson. We also have two aircraft that are certified for charter flight, and one of the aircraft is actually pressurized, and we are the only charter company in the state that has a pressurized aircraft. And that makes it really nice, because it really takes away the pressure on your ears when you're flying. It reduces the amount of noise. It's just an overall more enjoyable experience if you're flying, if you're in a pressurized aircraft. So I was very happy to see that, and I'm also proud to announce that we had eight additional private pilots certified at our airport, and according to our FBO manager, we are the highest in the state on that, aside from Grand Forks with the University of North Dakota Commercial Aviation Program. So I'm really happy with our FBO. They are progressive and moving forward. They have some very young and enthusiastic personnel working for them. Going on to our projects, we had a very busy 2011, and we're going to have a very busy 2012 as well. The commercial terminal, we finished that up at the latter part of 2012, or, excuse me, 2011, in October. And we have had a very, very good comments on the terminal. We were able to expand it roughly 5,000 square feet, and we added, and it was designed for 50 passengers, both in the non-stair lobby area and in the sterile lobby area. One of the biggest comments that we get is, now that we have restrooms in the sterile area, TSA in Great Lakes are able to open up the checkpoints sooner, and we actually have less people waiting around, and it just makes it really nice. So the airport authority is very proud of that. We came in just a little under budget and about a month ahead of schedule, so we're very happy with that. The master plan, we worked very closely with the FAA this past year. We showed them the growth that we're experiencing. We have, you know, pictures of our ramp, our terminal being full, our parking lots being full. And one of the things that we went to the FAA and said was, "We don't have a current master plan. Last master plan was done in 2002, with most of the research being done in 2001." So we were able to work with them, and we received a $220,000 grant for a master plan at the airport, specific for the airport. And K L J will be conducting that master plan at a, excuse me, at a Rapid City. And they said that they would be working in very close with the Dickinson office and the Bismarck office that are also doing the comprehensive plan. Because one of the parts of the master plan that the airport looks at is the socioeconomic factors. How many people are going to be in Dickinson? And then they equate that into, what type of air service do you need? What type of infrastructure do you need? So they will be working very close with that. One of the other things that this business plan, or, excuse me, this master plan will have, that our one from 2002 didn't, was a business plan. And that's something that we, as the airport authority, feel is going to be very important as we continue to move forward. We're going to have to look at possibly expanding runways in tax ways, and we're going to need to have the financing in place well before we move ahead with those sort of projects. So we're very excited about this master plan. We're going to be basically shaping the airport for the next 15, 20 years with this plan. One of the other projects that we did in 2011 was the parking lot. The, oh, excuse me, just to go back to the master plan, we did, we will start the master plan this March. They anticipate that it's going to be about a year-long process, so we will have something to present to the community in 2013. We also are going to have two public meetings where we invite the community to come in and talk about some of the concerns they may have with the airport and what they may like to see with it. And then we're also going to ask to have a city representative on a committee that would meet more on a regular basis to have the city's input as well. The parking lot project, we completed that. We were lucky to get that in. Thankful with the nice weather that we've had this winter and fall, we were able to get the parking lot completed. We added 66 additional spots for our commercial parking lot. We also added 20, we added a separate parking lot for car rental. That was 20 spots. We were able to take the car rental out of the commercial parking lot. We also added a 40-stall overflow gravel parking lot. We're happy to get this in before winter. We don't want our customers parking on the grass and out of light. However, the parking lot is full again, and we're continuing to work with K L J to see what we can do to expand our parking lot again. But that has probably been one of the biggest challenges that the airport has seen this year, is parking. And the... And the other project that we're very happy with is the hangar project. We started this in November. It's moving along at a very good pace. We should be completed with construction this April. The Airport Authority is very happy with this. We had to, it was a very challenging project with funding. We were able to secure funding from Stark County, Billings County, City of Dickinson, and Star Development. We're all very appreciative of those counties supporting this regional hangar. And we already have people who are aircraft operators flying into the airport, seeing the hangar being built, and are already asking the FBO, can they get a long-term lease with that? So, it's very good to see that. And the airline is one of the entities that is trying to get a long-term lease in there. So we're very happy with the hangar, and we think it's going to do very well. We may have to start looking at developing another hangar in the future. Two projects that we're going to be working on this year, we're going to be working on the design of the general aviation ramp. We need to do an expansion with that. We're seeing larger corporate aircraft flying in that have, you know, eighty to a hundred-foot wingspans, that are here for a couple of days. We just, with something that large, it takes up our ramp. When we had the oil summit, I believe it was here or in Williston, we had two aircraft on the ramp, and they were, had hundred-foot wingspans, and we basically had no other place to park aircraft. They were tight. And the day we had Fisher's consignment sale, that was a very challenging day for the FBO moving aircraft on the ramp. We actually were getting ready to close down over taxiways so we could park aircraft there. We just didn't have any more room on the ramp. So, we are looking at that. We're also expanding the snow removal, or doing the design for the snow removal building. I'm hoping to get an energy impact grant to move that project along this year. With the amount of traffic that we've had, we've had to add equipment and personnel, and we just don't have the storage capacity anymore. So, those are going to be some of the projects that we're working on this year. The concession air service, just as we continue to grow, we are, we added Hertz rental car. They approached us this past fall, and we were able to come to an agreement with them, and they started service in late October, and they've been doing exceptionally well there. And we've seen both our car rental agencies just doing extremely well out there, so. And one of the other things, too, that we're looking at is research in a snack bar. There's been a lot of, not complaints, but just notes that we would like to have something in the morning because with people having to check in for the six AM departure, they had to be out there at four thirty-five in the morning, and there's just nothing to really eat. So we're going to look at a snack bar that would meet the needs of the customers out at the airport. And we're, hopefully, next year when they come in and report, I can say that we have a snack bar out there. The financials, I just enclosed those for your review. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. And overall, are there any questions?
Well, great report, Matt. Sounds like things are really going well at the airport. And if you're up in January already by that significant amount, we should go over twenty thousand in planements, I would think, then, for this year.
Yes, we're anticipating about twenty-one thousand. I may be on the low side with that. I'm going to be very interested to see in July what our numbers are going to be. That's when we had the fourth round trip with no connections. So I'd like to see if we continue to grow above that, or are we finally going to hit our plateau because we are limited with the amount of air service that we have.
If you have, you have ten thousand three hundred and fifty-one in plane was 2010.
Mm-hmm.
Year in 2011, eighteen thousand nine sixty-three. With the four round trips, what's your maximum capacity going to be?
The, I know we have, they limit the amount of seats on the airplane. We have a thirty-seat aircraft, but we can only take about twenty-four, twenty-five. So we have about ninety-six a day. And I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's somewhere, I think, right around twenty-two, twenty-three thousand that we could take in a year if we had four round trips.
At that time, you either add another round trip, or?
Yeah, we either have to add another round trip, or?
We can't go larger planes now, can we?
We could go larger aircraft. That's one of the things that the master plan is looking at. With all the general aviation aircraft coming in, we're actually, we actually should be what's considered a C-2 airport. Right now, we're a B-2. And a C-2 just means we can have larger aircraft, and you have to extend your runway safety areas, some of the dimensions on your taxiways. And we actually should be there, and that's one of the things. Stage one of our master plan is actually going to get us from our B-2 to a C-2, and ultimately looking at a C-3 airfield. So we'd be the equivalent to a Minot, ultimately.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you for being here. Thank you for the report.
All right. Thank you guys for your support.
And thank you for not asking for any money. We have some public hearings scheduled here at 5:25. These are all rezoning petitions, and so I'm assuming, Mr. Kattan, these are all yours?
That's correct, Mayor. The, I have the next four items. Mr. President and Commission, the first item, this is a rezon petition request for Roar's development from Ag to medium-density residential, high-density residential park, and general commercial. The property is situated in the northwest quadrant of Exit Fifty-Nine. The property is approximately one hundred and sixty-eight acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval with one recommended condition. The condition was attached in your memo. Prior to final, and I'll read that for the record, prior to final approval of the rezon petition, the property shall be annexed into the city. With that, we could have the first reading tonight. The second reading will be held up until the annexation petition has been brought forth and officially adopted by the city. Then you can have a concurrent reading for the second reading for the adoption of that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kattan. And what is the ordinance number for this one?
Mr. President, this is ordinance fourteen forty-seven.
Okay. So at this time, we declare the public hearing open regarding first reading of ordinance fourteen forty-seven. Anyone from the public that would like to comment may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Are there any public comments on fourteen forty-seven? Not? We'll declare the public hearing closed. I'd invite comments from city commissioners or other city staff. Mr. Kattan has recommended that if you move to pass first reading of ordinance fourteen forty-seven, do we, Mr. Cohen, would we have to? We don't have to say anything in our motion about this property being annexed into the city, do we? I mean, it's just first reading.
It is just first reading. It puts it on the commission's agenda. I think the intent is to hold up second reading until the annexation is completed. You can include that within your motion or decline to do that at your discretion.
It really doesn't matter, does it, from a legal perspective?
No.
Okay. So would there be a motion regarding first reading of ordinance fourteen forty-seven?
Mr. President, move to approve ordinance fourteen forty-seven, first reading.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have the motion, the second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, then we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is a rezon petition request from medium-density residential to light commercial for lots four through seven, Block One, State's third addition. The site is located at the corner of Twenty-third Street or Twenty-third Avenue West and Fairway Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kattan. Mr. Cohen, I assume this is in fourteen forty-eight?
That's correct.
Okay. So at this time, we declare the public hearing open for ordinance fourteen forty-eight. And again, if you wish to comment, come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? There's no one from the public, so we declare the public hearing closed. And again, I'd invite comments by city commissioners or other city staff. Not? Would there be a motion regarding first reading of ordinance fourteen forty-eight?
Motion to approve first reading, ordinance fourteen forty-eight.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, Commission, the next item is a rezon petition request from Ag to high-density residential for the property located westerly of State Avenue and southerly of Twenty-first Street West. The site is approximately sixteen acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval with one recommended condition. Prior to final approval of the rezon petition, the property shall be annexed into the city. The applicant is also here. I don't know if the applicant would like to address the commission or not, but they're here as well.
Just state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Mr. President, members of the commission, my name is Will Ralph, and I'm with Sanderson Stewart. And I represent Braxton Development and Sterling Development. And we have Andrew Braxton and John Van Meter, who are part of the development group for the property. We just wanted to make ourselves available for any questions you might have regarding this zone change.
Okay. Well, we're pleased that you're here, and we'll ask, are there any questions at this time by commissioners? I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is ordinance fourteen forty-nine. The public hearing is open. Are there others that would like to comment regarding this ordinance? Now, would there be a motion regarding, oh, we'll declare the public hearing closed and ask if there are comments by city staff or city commissioners? Would there be a motion regarding ordinance fourteen forty-nine?
Mr. President, move to approve ordinance, first reading ordinance fourteen forty-nine.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, Commission, the next item is a rezon petition request from mobile home to high-density residential for the lots described in the memo, for, the lots described in a memo for blocks three through eleven, Southview Homes Edition. The property is located in the general vicinity of Eighth Street Southeast and Sixth Avenue Southeast. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kattan. This, I assume, is fourteen fifty. And so at this time, we declare the public hearing open. Anyone that wishes to comment on proposed ordinance fourteen fifty may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one that wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed and invite comments by city commissioners. I have a question. What prompted the move to go from mobile homes to R3?
The applicant's here, if you'd like to ask that directly, but I can answer it just in the discussions that we had, Mayor. Due to the vicinity across the street, you have KLD Development, which is industrial. Due to the market conditions, they felt that, you know, putting up multifamily housing on the south side, we do have apartments, but we don't have newer apartments. Would be beneficial for the community as a whole, and in essence, that was their prompting for that.
Did he answer it the way the applicant would like it answered?
Yeah, yeah. Hello. My name is Gee, and I represent the owner. When we met with Mr. Kattan, we basically asked what the city would like to see in that corner. We were originally thinking about putting in an RV park due to the high demand, but basically, Mr. Kattan expressed interest that the city would like to see permanent housing in that corner. And the other motivation was to limit the access of how many lots on Ninth. I remember Mr. Soren was concerned about having access of so many lots of Ninth Avenue.
Because of the traffic.
Yeah. But reselling these to R3, that would be eliminated.
All right. Thank you. That answers my question.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. I closed the public hearing, didn't I? All right. Would there be a motion regarding first reading of ordinance fourteen fifty?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion to approve, and the second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Mr. Kessel, I think we'll go back to your reports. You have a couple of other items left there.
Thank you, President Johnson. The next item is just simply a thank you letter from Western Wellness. The next item is another armory building update. Martin's Brenney continues to move along on this project rather briskly. There are some change orders that I have included in your packets this evening. There were three of them. They have to do with adding additional structural supports, LBLs and that variety. One of them is the rerouting of a fire alarm that is required by our fire code. So that's one that we may have generated ourselves. But you can see the cost there for this, and the detailed drawings for those projects. There's no need to approve those this evening. We just wanted to make sure you were aware that those were required as part of the continuation of the project, and that it does continue to move forward. I have one additional item that's not on the agenda. If you'd indulge me for just a moment, I'd like to introduce Shelley Nomenak. She's our new human relations coordinator. She's in the audience this evening. She started with us last Monday. We're very excited to have her with us. You can certainly come up and introduce yourself to the commission and, I'm sure you can do a much better job introducing yourself than I.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Nomenak.
Good evening.
Hi.
I don't know what.
Well, why don't you tell us where you're from, if you're from here?
I am originally from Dickinson, born and raised here. I moved away with my family for several years and decided there's no place like home. So I'm back and happy to be with the city.
How long have you been back in the community?
It's about a year and a half.
A year and a half?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And where did you live prior to coming back to Dickinson?
We lived in Montana for a while, Wisconsin, and South Dakota.
Okay. Well, you've got some good geographic experience.
Yeah. All in the Midwest.
Well, welcome back and welcome to the city.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Kessel?
Oh, that would conclude my report this evening. Thank you. I should say, for those interested, it is Finance Director Johnson's birthday today. So if you have the occasion, you might want to say happy birthday to Ms. Johnson.
Well, happy birthday, Mrs. Johnson.
In April, I'll tell you how old she is after the meeting.
We'll keep that a secret.
I don't know about you, Mrs. Johnson, but I just noticed that most good-looking people are born in February. I just, okay. Well, let's do our 5:40 public hearing. It's pretty close to 5:40. We're going to declare a public hearing open. This is regarding ordinance fourteen forty-six, which is prohibiting trucks' traffic on Third Avenue West. Chief Dossinger, is there anything you want to say about this in terms of introduction before we ask for public comment?
Hi, good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. This is a public hearing regarding prohibition of trucks and commercial vehicles exceeding a gross vehicle weight of twenty-six thousand and one pounds on Third Avenue West between the I-94 Exchange and Broadway, with five exceptions. The first exception would be vehicles making deliveries or picking up merchandise. The second exception would be vehicles operated or owned by the City of Dickinson, such as snow removal equipment and public works vehicles. The third one would be the operation of emergency vehicles, such as fire trucks, has a fine in the traffic ordinance of the City of Dickinson upon any street in the city. A fourth one, again, properly authorized snow removal equipment. And the fifth one, commercial passenger buses, school buses, and other fleet passenger transportation vehicles. A violation of this ordinance would be a hundred dollar fine.
I can't remember. Did we act on first reading of this already?
That's correct. That's correct. First reading was approved at the last commission meeting.
All right. Any questions or comments for Chief Dossinger?
Chief, you said there's going to be kind of a breaking in period to get this introduced to the public and...
That's correct. It's going to definitely be an educational process and a lenient process in our enforcement efforts.
Okay.
Mr. Kessel?
I haven't even had a chance to let Chief Dossinger know, but we did receive the letter from State Engineer Larry Gengele and they are supportive of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there's no questions or comments, further comments for Chief Dossinger. We'll ask or invite anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this proposed ordinance. You may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? Okay, if there's no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing then. And I think it would be our intention to place this on the agenda at the next meeting for second reading. Okay. Well, with that, we're going to leave the timetable agenda, go back to the non-time table and we're under tab five now, Public Safety, and we're here to hear a presentation by the fire chief, Chief Seabuck.
Good evening, President Johnson, commissioners. At the last city commission meeting, you approved our request to pursue grant monies to fund a public safety center. At this meeting, in part of Mr. Kessel's report, you heard mention of some city property that may be used for such a purpose. I just want to present some information this evening to fill in the gaps, so to speak, for the city commission and for the public as to how this has come to be a public safety center. I'm sure the commission will recall approximately around two thousand and nine, the Dickinson Fire Department began gathering information to and presenting information to the commission to support the idea that there may be another fire station location needed in the community. Part of that process also helped us determine a possible general location for that property. In two thousand and eleven, we began discussions with Police Chief Dossinger and Mr. Kessel about the idea of a joint facility because of the impact of the growth of the community on the police department as well as on the fire department. One of the things we looked at is efficiency in our response and also a facility that would address the growing needs of growing staff that's taking place to keep up with our expanding community. One of the things we recognized was the initial properties that we looked at that supported a fire substation concept probably would not support the idea of a joint facility. The joint facility would house a Dickinson Police Department and would house a Dickinson Fire Department. And the initial properties that we had looked at, we realized were too small if we incorporated a partner. So we began looking at options and we didn't come to this decision lightly, although it wasn't a scientific method. We did look at some options. One of the options, of course, was the joint facility located on a single piece of property. Another option that we looked at was the Dickinson Fire Department pursuing the substation concept on the piece of property that we had recognized and possibly a separate facility for the Dickinson Police Department on a piece of city property. Another option that was looked at was the substation concept for the fire department and possibly the police department relocating into a building that may become available. And again, it wasn't a scientific method, but between Chief Dossinger, Mr. Kessel and myself, we weighed the pros and cons of those various ideas and it kept, the idea of a joint facility on a proper parcel to support that facility kept coming to the forefront. So that's somewhat of the short explanation on how we migrated from the initial idea of the fire department substation to a joint facility. The need is there, I believe, for both departments and the key to that concept working will be a building design that supports the needs of both departments and a parcel, a piece of property, that will support that building design. But I thought it important, there's been some information, like I said at the last commission meeting, where we're pursuing grant dollars for what's now become the public safety center concept. And again, tonight you heard that there may be a parcel of city property that may support this new concept and there's definitely gaps there for the citizens and for the commissioners. So that, in a short summary, is how we've come from the substation to the public safety center concept. And with that, I'll entertain any questions or comments you may have.
Have you had an opportunity to, you know, research other public safety centers in other communities? I mean, so you, is there a model out there that you tend to favor at this time?
We've just begun that process. We know that the public safety center concept has been used in Grand Forks and we know that elements of that concept exist even in Bismarck and the newest fire department substation that was built in Bismarck that supports an element of the police department being a part of that. Across the nation, the concept is not new and there's information available for us that we intend to pursue to make sure that we do this right.
I think the next question I have really would be for Chief Dossinger. While he's walking up, I'll ask the question. I know from previous discussion, it makes sense for the fire department to have a location north of the interstate and probably northwest is a good location. So that's, parcel of land is, from a fire department perspective, probably fits your needs very nicely. How about for the police department kind of being out there in the northwest corner? How does that work for you location-wise?
Well, I guess we look at us where we expect that section of the city to be a rapidly growing area, especially the northwest part of town. And we have very good access of the State's Avenue and the Twenty First Street West. We actually recently adapted a zone system, patrol zone system, where each house is assigned a sector of the city, increasing our visibility and the patrols in the residential district. And part of this, we also talked to Chief Seabuck about getting a substation or a precinct house at the currently existing headquarters of the fire department.
Oh, okay. So, you know, right now at the law enforcement center, we have our dispatch group. You have holding cells, I think?
That's correct.
What would we, what do you envision having in this public safety building? Would you replicate those kinds of things?
You know, currently, we don't have any type of a lockup or holding cell that we utilize other than the correctional center. So in the new public safety building, we'd only have interview rooms. If somebody was to be held in a lockup situation, they'd have to be transported to the Southwest Multi-County Correctional Center.
Okay.
Definitely a hurdle for us to look at is definitely the dispatch center. That's not a center that we would move and take with us. And this opens up conversations about possibly having a regional dispatch center for the area.
And would you envision that would be managed by the Dickinson Police Department?
I envision that be managed by a board, maybe have appointed members from the City of Dickinson, Stark County and other jurisdictions that are willing to come on at that time and have a regionally supported dispatch center.
Okay. Because presently, we, the City of Dickinson manages that, don't we?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Chief Seabuck, when do you expect to hear back from the grant application?
The Energy Infrastructure and Impact Grant that we submitted, I believe, has a turnaround time of around the end of February, if I'm not mistaken, beginning of March, somewhere in that area. Mr. Kessel's nodding his head. I think he has some information on that.
That'd be accurate. Beginning of March, latest the middle of March, we should hear back on funding. And we may not get full funding, but we may get partial funding.
Is this something that the city has to go make a presentation on or do they just take the paper application and that's it?
They accepted the paper application. I have since had conversations with Land Commissioner Gabey about the application, so he's well aware of its arrival. But there is no public presentation portion that I'm aware of.
And Mayor Chief Dossinger and I also were able to make a personal contact with him at the meeting that was up at the Strom Center a week ago. So we were able to talk with him briefly about it at that time also.
Okay.
Again, the key to this working, and Mayor, you touched on this, the key to it working is proper building design. The sooner we'd be able to start talking with a designer or somebody that would be able to help us answer some of the questions on how the facility would really look, the sooner we'll be able to determine if the piece of property available would support the structure. And hopefully, that would all come together and be the case.
Any other comments or questions?
Sounds like a good plan.
Yeah.
I think we're supportive.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we'll go to tab six. And this is Public Works and Planning. The first item has to do with the development impact fee projects. And I think Engineer Soren, these are yours to introduce to us.
Yes, they are. Thank you, President Johnson, city commissioners. We do have three development impact fee request applications for you to consider tonight. I did want to run through the program a little bit before we get into the individual ones and let you know kind of where we stand to date. There was a spreadsheet passed out to you before the meeting and on the residential side is the first page and the commercial industrial is the second. I would point out, you know, the impact fee program according to ordinance is set up at seven million dollars funding, with that being split four million for residential, three million for commercial. When you look at these sheets, you can see that on the residential side, we've allocated four million, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars, which means we've actually approved twenty-one thousand, you know, almost twenty-two thousand more than our funds available according to that breakdown. When you look at the industrial and commercial, you could see that we have one million, seventy-eight thousand dollars left available on that side of it. So we're still well within the seven million at this point. The three requests we have in front of you tonight are all for the residential side of the impact fees. Two of them for three hundred thousand apiece, the third one for slightly less than that, approximately two hundred thousand, which would be another eight hundred thousand, which gets us pretty close to the total of seven million that we have allocated for the impact fee program. You're not asking you to make a decision on that tonight, on the funding, but I wanted to point out that there is going to be a decision that's going to have to be made as to the direction we want to go with that in the future. With the projects we're bringing tonight, that doesn't necessarily mean you can't approve them. We just can't pay if funds aren't available and all the applicants are aware that if we don't have funds available, we can't pay over that seven million mark. The one decision I think that has to be made is if we want to allocate these towards residential or do we want to keep the commercial side of it still viable in the short term. As we're starting to see these projects come in, I think there's going to be some requests coming that direction. Currently, we're working on the program as a whole. I'm looking to try and maybe create a development agreement that would incorporate impact fees so we have a little bit more control over the projects and how the developer moves forward, but we're not at that point right now. So tonight, we do have three different projects. I'll run through each of those. If you want me to go through each of them before we act on them so you understand all three of them or if you want me to run through each one individually, I can do that as well.
I guess you can run through, you can present them all. Question I have, I know we have the seven million dollar limit and that's hard and fast in ordinance, but what I can't remember is within the ordinance, if the allocation was specific, I mean, that we're limited to four million dollars residential or if that's, is just kind of our practice and policy?
I believe, as I understand it, that was just kind of our targets. The seven million was the number we can't go over according to ordinance.
So if we wanted to have five million dollar in residential and two million dollars in commercial and industrial, we're okay with that?
I believe we're okay with that.
Okay. I guess I'd make one other comment or observation. I think, you know, our seven million dollar limit is probably too tight. So, and as you said, you're working on a proposal that would replace the impact fund program as we now have it, but I would assume there would still be impact funds. You're just going to go about doing it differently. And I'm just going to suggest to my fellow commissioners that I think we're going to be faced with raising that number. I think there's strong enough demand and the city has enough financial strength that I think we can comfortably raise it and be able to, you know, deal with it from a financial perspective. It appears that we're going to have strong development for the foreseeable future.
That's true. If we want to continue with the program like this and providing assistance on these projects, the requests are certainly going to be out there. We've already been talking with probably twenty different projects looking to be coming this summer and I'm probably underestimating that a little bit. So I do think the requests are going to come if we want to continue with the program like we've got now.
Well, I'm assuming what you're going to propose is still going to have some form of development impact fee.
Yes.
So, I mean...
Yes, we're going to bring that forward.
Yeah. So it's likely we're going, the city staff here is going to present a recommendation to us that we increase our financial commitment to this program, I guess.
That is correct.
Yeah.
The question is to what degree. I think our presentation's going to say, if we want this to go forward, we need more funds. This is the best program we feel we have to implement the funding.
Okay. Well, if my fellow commissioners are ready, I'm ready to have you present all three of these.
The first one we have is Cook Meadow Hills, second. We did do Cook Meadow Hills, was a development impact fee project. He came in, did all the water sewer, street development on that. Pleased with their development. This is the second phase that's getting into some multifamily housing. We are recommending, this fits the criteria for impact fees, we're recommending approval of that program. It is a, over a six hundred thousand dollar project, so would be eligible for the three hundred thousand match. The second one we have is Roars. It's a State Seventh Edition. It's the next phase to the north from where Roars has completed their development. It is another one that's over six hundred thousand dollar cost, so is eligible for the three hundred thousand impact fees as well. And the last one is Roar State Eighth Edition, which is the last street in that development south of Fairway. It is a residential impact fee request as well. The application does indicate commercial, industrial. That was an error on their part. He said they have made the commitment not to ask for any of the commercial. So the project's about one point two million. Of that is about twenty-five percent residential. That's what they're asking for on the development impact fee because about twenty-five percent of the lots improved are the residential side, which is a four hundred thousand dollar project, approximately two hundred thousand for the impact fees. So if all three are approved, we're looking at an eight hundred thousand dollar worth of impact fees.
Okay. And Mr. Carleen, are these resolutions four, five and six?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. You've heard the introduction by the city engineer. Are there any comments or questions on any of these? Now, we'll have to act on them separately. We'll begin with the Cook Meadow Hills request. That's resolution zero four. Would there be a motion regarding this item?
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Move to approve Resolution Number 04.
Second.
There's a, we have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. The next one then is Roar's State 7th addition, Resolution 05.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Move to approve Resolution Number 05.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other, any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Then it's Roar's State 8th addition, and Resolution 06.
Go ahead, Clayton. I don't want to do all the work.
All right. Motion to approve Resolution Number 6.
Sir, second.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to Item B, which is a final plat, Oxy First Subdivision. And Mr. Katan, is this yours?
Yes, Mr. President, fellow commissioners. This is a final plat request for Oxy's First Subdivision. The property is located to the west of Highway 22 and in between 32nd Street Southwest and 33rd Street Southwest, just south of Solarby. The site is approximately 21 acres. The planning is only commissioned and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Katan. Mr. Colleen, Resolution 07? All right. I'm on a roll. Any comments or questions here by city staff? What is being built here?
Oxy is building their office building. It's very similar to what Baker Hughes built. It'd be a general commercial up front or their office in front with industrial towards the west of the property. Plans look very good.
All right. Other comments or questions? Would there be a motion regarding Resolution 07?
So move to approve.
Second.
With the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to the reports, the code enforcement report.
Mr. President, the code enforcement report is our year-end report. Reflects December's activities along with the conclusion of the year 2011. You will notice a significant drop in permits that were issued in December. That's not reflective of the building activity. It's reflective of new staff. We lost an administrative assistant, and then we were training in December. So much of those permits were not entered in December. They're entered in January. You'll notice that they were under one category, single-family residential, which was the first, which was the first part of training during that. The totals themselves, you know, when you look at the, even with that, our development activity was just a tad below the figures from last year. I think the important factor is the year-end building values for new construction were at $123.5 million compared to last year, at this time at $75.4. This is definitely reflective of the higher quality, larger scale, and complexity of the projects that we are getting. Also, under alterations and additions, the permanent values was at $20.7 million compared to $7.7 million from the year before, roughly, or almost three times the increase in values from that year. You will notice at the very bottom, our multifamily units to date, 193 or 194. I think that's a significant increase from last year, which is reflective of our duplexes and more particularly, the multifamily that we are building, the apartments that are being built throughout the city. All indications are with the rezon petition that we had today from the Braxton Group, they were going to propose 277, and many others that have come here, that I think that the number will far exceed the apartments that we have, that were built in the year 2011. So with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Katan. Any comments or questions? Do you have any numbers on January then? Are we going to have a big January since we had a slow December?
I would anticipate January is going to be more than it was last year. I'm not sure what the totals were that was prior to me starting, but yes, we are, there are other permits that we're adding to that. So January should be definitely higher than they were last year, and it may be a significant boom from what we have.
You've been here less than a year.
Believe it or not, grows on you, doesn't it?
It does. No comment. Okay. Any other questions or comments for city planner or city engineer? All right. Any comments by city commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments.
Good evening. My name's Dustin Stuber.
And David Kindlelo.
I guess we're here tonight to talk to you guys frankly as a plea for help. Both of us live on 23rd Avenue between 2nd and you live on?
6th.
6th Street. And for about two and a half years, we've had to deal with, you know, a lot of issues with dirt. We've worked with some of the city staff. And again, we've just, I guess we've had it. We don't know what to do. David's got a few pictures he'd like some of the commissioners to take a look at.
And I have been in contact with Mr. Kessel. He had talked with Roar's, and some things have been done, but they haven't been, in my mind, necessary to stop the problem of the constant dirt-wind problem we deal with here in North Dakota. And my entire yard is completely destroyed at this point. And outside of covering up all the 80 acres that is remaining open, I don't know what else to do. I'm about 20,000, I imagine, into damages if I have to redo everything, so. Got some pictures. I don't know who would like to look at them.
These are new pictures as of last Saturday. Those are updated from the month I sent you two months ago.
What kind of conversations have you had with Roar's Development?
I've had Mr. Roar's over to my place one time, and he indicated to me that we, he has taken some steps. He's had guys out there shoveling. He's had a front-end loader in my driveway two different times. I've had literally three-foot drifts. And he's, you know, he's been taking care of at least my driveway. They sprayed apparently a poly membrane out there a couple weeks ago. It's doing absolutely nothing. A lot of those pictures you will see, I took pictures last Saturday when the wind was blowing. It's coming up, it's just like the snow would if it was snow out there. He stated that if he were to do anything on my property, he would have to start doing things for everyone else out there. I'm kind of uniquely situated there just perfectly. When that north wind, northwest wind blows, it hammers me. So he's done a few things to, in my mind, try to take steps, but it's not solving the problem of the open, I mean, it's just an open wound out there. Anytime we get a 20, 30 mile an hour wind, it's just like going out and plowing the snow. You can, you know, we got a blizzard come in, I have to go plow it three, four times in one evening. It's no different with the sand. And it just continues. I had new construction out there last year. Cut up a new fence, basketball court, put about $27,000 into it. It's all covered up by dirt now. New patio, the whole deal. And it just keeps coming. And he said he would try to do something in the spring, didn't give me any specifics. But by the spring rolls around, I think, I'm getting a little nervous because he's selling lots out there and going to pass the buck to the lot owners as they start purchasing the lots. And then I'm going to be left with the buck being pushed to the developers out there, which I guess would be their responsibility as well. But I'm just a little nervous that nothing's going to happen. And even if someone does come out there and clean it up, and he spends the money to, or they spend the money to fix the damages, until the problem gets fixed, it's not going to, it's not going to stop. The wind's not going to stop blowing out there.
Yeah. And to go further, you know, I just think some of the city's erosion control, if you took a comparison with other municipalities, it's far from industry standard. I mean, there's actually, you know, days where there's visibility concerns driving. And I think there's another aspect of just health. I mean, I can't imagine it's great to be breathing in that for multiple years. I mean, it is an issue, I think.
I lived in Fargo before we moved out here, and I don't know if you're familiar with the Ozgood subdivision out there, southwest Fargo. We were the fourth house that was built out there, and I dealt with it. You know, it's dust in the house, whatever, you know. And I was willing, you know, that's just part of living next to this. I was no problem with that. But it's, even that part of it has gotten a little ridiculous. I got dogs. They come in from outside. My kids come in from outside. It's, you go out and stand in my grass this summer and walk around, and the dust, you know, just is everywhere. And listen to that, that part of it, I'm willing to deal with. I mean, it's, I'm in the oil business. I'm part of the impact here. And it's, but it's, as you see in those pictures, it's laughable to me. I mean, again, that's, you know, I've spent a lot of money on my yard to make it look nice, and it's just been completely destroyed.
Mr. Kindlelo, did you say those weren't dated? Did you say they were all taken Saturday?
I took all those pictures. The ones that were of that newer construction area were this morning. All the others were taken last Saturday, not two Saturdays ago. We had about a 35 mile an hour wind that day. So I wanted to take pictures of the dust going across the road from the northwest because my last conversation with Roar's was that the poly membrane had took, and that we weren't having that problem anymore. He told me to call him next time I saw the wind blowing, or the wind was blowing, and he'd come out there and show me that it wasn't from the open 80 acres. I called him on Saturday, left him a message, and I hadn't heard from him. I called a couple of the commissioners as well, left some messages. And I talked to Mr. Jackson on Saturday. He said he wouldn't be here. I left a message for Mr. Altman's. Just trying to get something done, you know, again, the pictures speak for themselves, the damage that's going on. I don't think any of you would appreciate it either.
Those are certainly more dramatic pictures than you shared with me earlier.
Yeah. And it's just been a culmination of, since May. You know, that's the product of, from May to now, of what's happened. It's just been a slow, and I've been on him, emailing, you know, throughout the process. We've been in communication. And I believe he feels he's doing something about it, but it's really not doing anything at this point. So I feel like we got to at least come in front of you guys and see if something can't be done. First and foremost, stop the problem at hand and get that ground covered up until it's used.
Just to give you an example, I'm a little further south than him, closer to the BLM, right on the corner. That's about two years ago, that's when Roar's got in there, and some other contractors. I had just bought in my house, put in, you know, full yard irrigation system. And after a year and a half, I'd raised, spent my, raised the irrigation heads on my irrigation system because it went up, you know, the yard actually grew three or four inches in one year. And that's minus all the shrub beds. But I was able, you know, again, I was with him. I could take those little things, even though they weren't little to me, but, you know, we can give a little, but, you know, complete destruction, sometimes on a real windy day in our houses, if you ever remember an old truck on a gravel road, that's what it smells like in your house, you know. It just doesn't seem like you should have to live with that. And so I guess we're just asking if you guys are willing to do anything.
In your conversation with Roar's last Saturday?
He didn't, I didn't have a conversation with him then. I left him a message on his cell phone. I talked to him about two months ago. He was at my house.
Did you just state recently that they said the dust or dirt was not coming from those 80 acres?
Yes. He said that, because I called him and said, he sent me an email stating that come spring, he would, he didn't really word it in a way that he would help me, but that we would address my situation in the spring. I wanted a little bit more out of him from that email. I emailed him saying I didn't feel like the poly membrane was taking. And he called me and left me a voicemail and said that he thought it was, and that if, next time we had a very windy day, to give him a call, and he'd come out there and see for himself.
In your opinion, if it wasn't coming from the 80 acres, where was it coming?
Well, he's telling me that, you know, Kuntz now, because I live on the corner of 6th Street and 23rd, and directly to the west where 6th Street tied in, Kuntz has now, I think he's got two projects going, couple open holes there and some dirt piles. I think he feels like it's coming from there now. But it's not very often, at least in the five years I've lived, about four years I've lived back here, that it's come directly from the west. When I get hit with the wind, it comes from the northwest almost every time. And those pictures show the dust coming across from the northwest all the way down the street. We had this wet weather here recently. The pictures that show the dirt into the street, people were driving by, and it was mud, and I didn't take a picture of it, but my fence along the boulevard is just completely brown and muddy from the dirt and mud getting kicked up from just the traffic on 23rd. That, I would say, is coming directly from the west. But my neighbor directly across the street, his fence is protecting him, but even the corner piece of his grass is completely covered up. Mr. Brent Miller is his name. And he, you know, is with me on this. I don't think he could be here tonight, but, and it goes all the way down 6th Street. And I'm just the highest impact there. I'm just perfectly set there for this. The snow is always a killer for me, you know, but that, you've just got to deal with that. That's what it was. Roar's, you know, kind of indicated to me that he couldn't control an act of God out there. And my response was, I didn't have a problem with God before they showed up and opened up that land. So I don't know what else to do here. It's just a plea for help, whether or not an ordinance, or if there is an existing ordinance, that would force them to cover that up. Because until that's done, you know, they're going to be building out there for another year, two years, if not longer. This isn't going to go. We didn't even get to enjoy our patio last year for barbecues. My gorilla's ruined, my patio furniture's ruined. We created that new construction for basketball court and another outdoor patio. We did, literally with fire pit. You saw the pictures of what's around my fire pit. Just didn't get to enjoy the outdoors at all this, I mean, it's just constant dirt. You know, calm days, yeah, I would go out there and clean everything off and get out there and deal with it. But right now, my outdoor patio is barren. I've cleaned everything out of there, taken it to the dump, and I've got nothing out there. It's just dirt. I sweep it every weekend, and have given up on that now.
The, just so we're clear again, the photographs you shared with us tonight were taken since that membrane was put down.
Since the membrane was, the membrane, I think, was done about five, six weeks ago. This was, those pictures were taken about 10 days ago.
Yeah. And, you know, the city was very much aware of the problem over there, and I know they had talked directly with Roar's people and encouraged them to do the membrane. I'm disappointed to hear that that doesn't seem to be working. I think...
Me too.
Well, I live over there too.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, they were out Monday, that Monday, with a little bobcat going up and down the sides of the streets. And, you know, he's doing those little things to make sure the street at least is staying cleared, and my driveway's staying cleared. He's had a guy in my yard shoveling, who I sent home. You're not going to be able to shovel that out of my grass. And he's had, like I said, a front-end loader. There's that one area, I get a three-foot drift every time. It's just like the snow. You see what's going on in front of my trees there. It's, that's since the membrane was put down. I mean, it was covered up before then already, but that's, it's just, every time we get a wind, I can expect it. we get a wind, I can expect another round of my front, my front porch, my front door, my wife's Christmas wreaths, everything we had out front, we brought, brought it in, and I, I should have taken a picture, but I set it all down and start boxing it up, and I, and I had a huge mess of dirt. I mean, I, stupid not to shake it off before I brought it in, but it was, it was just, I mean, just to laugh at it.
Mr. President, Mr. Cretan or Mr. Soren, maybe one of you guys can answer this question? The gutter drainage in that area, doesn't that drain in that little settling pond to the southwest, and then from there comes up and drains into the Dickinson Dyke?
Um, that's correct. The, the stormwater runoff that you're referring to, yes, it ultimately ends up down at the, the Dickinson Dyke.
And it wasn't, too many years ago, we spent an awful lot of money dredging that Dickinson Dyke.
Right.
Have you, you probably haven't had a chance to go out to the holding pond to see what that looks like now, huh?
No, we haven't. We've certainly been aware of this and have been in contact with Roars on several occasions and continue to be trying to get this issue resolved. You know, obviously, the, the tackifier that they put down, they had hopes that that was going to resolve a lot of the issues. It sounds like it's not helping at all. We've talked to them about covering up. I know that they were, we're looking at a crimping process that they were possibly going to be bringing in. It's my understanding, I think they actually maybe even bought a machine to try and do that. We've been in contact with them about future developments and how they're going to open them up, and how this could potentially jeopardize the process that they have to do on some of those. And I know they've made some pretty significant investments here, obviously, it's not helping, but they have assured us that they were going to be working with the, the homeowners as well to try and get this issue resolved on, on their property, not only the city and-
If, if there isn't a substance that can go over the top of this to hold it down, could at least a barrier be erected that would, you know, stop the dirt from crossing Twenty-Third?
That's certainly a challenge. I believe they've got some silt fence up, they've tried snow fence. I think some of it helps, but when you get the winds we get in that sand, it, it becomes very difficult to, to control with that.
I think if, yeah, at least if we could control the drifting, the, yeah, those small barriers, you can see they stopped some, but not very much. I mean, I've, I've driven down Twenty-Third when the visibility was, was not very good when the wind was blowing, so. We're talking to them, we'll continue to talk to them, see what we can do. I mean, we know it's a problem. I guess, you know, for us on a go-forward basis, is there something in our ordinances or our development practices that, where we can prevent others from opening up so much land? I, I mean, that is one thing about North Dakota, the wind is blowing, and we've got our spring months coming up when it typically blows even stronger in the spring.
Yeah, I think there's, there's things we can do. This one just got away from us, they started opening it up. It happens to be the most sandy soil we've got, which creates other issues. You know, they talked about the Fargo area, we've talked with Roars about that, and, and, you know, their response was, we're used to doing this all the time, but they've got, you know, six, eight-foot of topsoil-
Right.
-and it doesn't blow quite the same, so we, we have a different product that creates a whole different issue that they weren't aware of when they, when they started clearing that topsoil. So, we did get behind the eight ball on it, and we're, we're trying to get caught up with them and get some issues resolved. We, we have been encouraging them to try and work with homeowners to resolve those issues as well.
And they, they have. I mean, I've, I've, I've had good communication with, with Roars, but communication only could go so far when the actions aren't, aren't really following through. I mean, they are going to be responsible for fixing my yard, I mean, that's, that's going to happen. But they can come in and fix it this spring, but if, if the problem that, that is there doesn't get fixed, I'm going to be dealing with it again, I'll be dealing with it all summer. Until that gets covered up, it's just, I mean, in the oil business, we'd, we'd be shut down in a heartbeat for operating like this. We can't have a five-acre tract open more than twenty days out there like this without, without getting in trouble.
The city should have a, you know, a dog in the fight in this one. Your stormwater management, I mean, it's a big deal. You got, sometimes there's dirt from curb to curb, and that's, you know, all going down your system. I just would encourage you guys to look, at least look at some other municipalities, how they handle this, because I used to work in the business as a planner, and most of these places, this wouldn't go very far, this type of activity. Your permit would be revoked awfully quick. So maybe just take a look, and you can maybe utilize some of the things that would stop this, and you had a good idea, but, you know, there's soil guards you can spray on, there's all types of different things. If you're going to open up over a hundred acres of sand, you're going to have problems. And just unfortunate, you know, he's had to take the brunt of it, but-
So David, what would your resolution be? What would you like to see the city do?
Just some kind of mesh, force them to put some kind of mesh covering over it, or some kind of, like we do, like the DOT does out when they're doing construction, they put that heavy seed down, and that takes care of it. I mean, yeah, you're still going to deal with some dirt, but it wouldn't be very good for the motorists out on Ninety-four to be dealing with this, so they're, they're forced to, to uphold a pretty high standard to keep that dust from flying. There, there are, like he says, things out there to cover it up. It may cost them a little extra money, but-
Just a cover crop would work. It, it, it depends, you know, it was, it's strange that they remove topsoil for, you know, that amount of land, just to, you know, and they didn't really, really reshape the, the landscape all that much. You know, the, the EPA, which really, you know, they're the ones that write guidelines for this, that, you know, it's, in certain cases, you guys should have to follow, but that, you know, they have, they set it out, what they recommend, and, you know, they have some good ideas, I guess. That's the ones we have to follow in business.
I, I don't know, you know, exactly what products, but I know what I've seen, even in Fargo. Fargo, they got clay mostly after, after that dirt's gone, but some kind of mesh or plastic just be rolled out and stapled down or pinned down outside of that, I don't know. Otherwise, it needs to be seeded. That's covered up, that's, that's the only thing I could say.
Mr. President, I think we need to have a representative from Roars come to the next meeting and address this, at least tell us what their concerns are, what they're thinking. My immediate concern is, I mean, not only for these gentlemen, but we're about a one-inch rain away from an environmental disaster with that drainage situation over there. That Dickinson Dyke is a very popular place. It's been stocked, it's been dredged, it's, you know, we, we get a one-inch rain here and we got a problem, no doubt.
And I've been honestly hoping for some rain at the, towards the end of the summer, just to get some of it cleaned off, but it never did come, you know, and we've been pretty short on, you know, and, and Roars did say they were hopeful that the, that the winter would, you know, would take care of this problem, the snow would come down. And I informed him at that point in time, I said, that's even going to make it worse for me, and, and he didn't quite agree, but even a little bit of snow we got when the wind blew, then, then now, to get a snowblower out there and start tearing up equipment because you got sand running through it, he didn't understand that part of it either. When the, we got that little bit of snow, it just looked horrible. I mean, and then that melts, and then it goes on top of my, like he, like he said, the sprinkler system and all that. It, I'm kind of glad it didn't snow, to be honest with you, because then I would have had even a bigger mess. We get any rain, my, that whole front yard obviously has to be dug out, there's, there's no other, I've got, I've got, when you're walking on areas of where the grass is still somewhat apparent, you're stepping up almost five inches onto complete new soil on, on my yard. So, rain, like you said, rain comes now, you know, it's, I've just got flat, a beach, you know, it's, it's just sandy beach, that's all it is.
Well, I wish I would have seen the pictures before we approved, you know, the seventh and eighth edition impact fees tonight of your property.
I, I wish we would, I would have come sooner. I, I, I'm not the kind of person that likes to get up here and do this, I don't want to complain, I, I, but I got a wife too, that's extremely upset about this, kids, you know, and stuff, and it's, it's, so I've, I'm just kind of forced to come up here and do this. I should have came sooner, I, I just, two Saturdays ago was the final straw for me.
You aren't the only two. I've heard people along there.
Yeah, and I, and I have too, I mean, and, and I've, I've walked through the whole neighborhood many times, and, and, you know, if someone else is complaining, I'd invite them to come over to my house and look at what I'm dealing with, and everyone's got, got certainly legitimate beef out there. When, when you talk about putting barriers down, it's eighty acres, give or take, twenty acres maybe, once that wind blows, even those barriers, it, they're, they're not going to stop much, because once that stuff gets airborne, it's, it's just covering, it's just, it's just covering everything. He showed me pictures today of his patio, and he's still dealing with it, I mean, at a small level, but it's, his patio's covered up with dirt out there. I mean, and he's, he's pretty far south of the, of the open patch right now, so. That's, that's all I have, just as a plea to see if we can't get something, something moving to, to, so once spring hits, maybe we can minimize what we're dealing with out there.
Well, you certainly made an impression tonight, so we thank you for, for coming. And do we have the pictures over here?
I, I'll, I'll get them all organized. I was, I was going to make five folders and all that, I'll, I'll organize it a little better, this was just kind of a last-second thing to do tonight, so.
Well, I think- Do you include the dates on those when you do that?
Yes, I will. I was going to write them all on there, but I, I'll put them on a disc or something and get them a little more professional looking and bring them over.
And I'm, I'm sure our city staff is going to be in contact with, with Roars tomorrow, and even though we've approved these, Commissioner Altman, I, I don't think we have to-
Issues to check.
I think city staff has the discretion on whether or not they're going to, you know, to fund them, because even though we approve, our developers are still expected to, you know, develop according to city standards and rules, and so.
So tonight, we approved about six hundred thousand, five hundred and fifty?
About five hundred for Roars. Now, we actually approved the project as eligible for impact fees, we didn't actually approve funding tonight, so.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Kessel and Mr. Soren, we'll leave it to you two to work out how you're going to deal with this tomorrow, but recommend that you do deal with it tomorrow.
President Johnson, we're in fairly frequent contact with Mr. Roars. When I say Mr. Roar, I think you're referring to Shane Roar's when you say that, yeah. I'm referring to Jim Roar's, his father, when I, when I make those contacts, and I know they did have high hopes that the tackifier would work. It doesn't appear to have done what they expected it to do based on those pictures, so we'll follow up again.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the commission? Not, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.